Okay, we've got a green light. We can go to work. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday, April 16, 2019, meeting of the Edina City Council. Hope you all got your taxes filed by midnight last night. And except for kids, you don't have to worry about that yet. So we have a roll call that we need to go through, and Ms. Allison, would you read the roll, please?
Member Staunton?
Here.
Member Fisher?
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Anderson?
Here.
Mayor Hovling?
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Assistant Manager Schaefer, any changes to the agenda from your point of view? All right, anyone else wish to modify the agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as shown.
Yes, Your Honor, consent items M and O.
Remove those from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All right. With the exception of M and O removed from the consent agenda, which is 5M and O, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as shown?
So moved.
Second?
A motion, second, to adopt the agenda with the exception of 5M and O, which we will take up in due course. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And then we have community comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening?
My name is Frank Lorenz, 7151 York Avenue South, Edina 55435. I wanted to revisit a matter that I brought up several months ago regarding the purchase of new fire engines. Normally, a modern fire engine has a useful life of 12 to 15 years, and it can be used much longer than that, but the cost of repair parts tends to skyrocket after a certain number of years, simply because the manufacturers can do it. The city of Edina made a decision several months ago to replace all of their fire engines, except, I believe, a heavy-duty Ford pumper truck that's used for grass fires. But in any event, the issue was you were replacing them many years sooner than you have in the past, and the statement was made, I believe, by the mayor that this would be a good thing to do because it would avoid usage problems by the firefighters. You can say that, but every one of your firefighters has had to pass the state fire academy, which is a rigorous exam and months of training, and they get training updates, which means that they all can read, write, and speak English. And I think the chances of them making a mistake because all the trucks aren't the same, which was the gist of the argument, falls on its own sword. The city manager, who isn't here tonight, then said that you would get a better -- the city would get a better price by buying multiple engines at the same time. That could be true or not. The state of Minnesota has a massive list of equipment and supplies for which they've negotiated special prices, and counties and cities and townships can avail themselves of the state list to get a better price. They don't have to, but usually the state price is better than an individual city, town, or county can negotiate for itself. So I don't know whether the city got a better price or not, or whether the discount was significant enough, but you've made a policy decision that essentially commits you to replace the fire engines much more frequently than you have in the past, and that means that the debt service, the interest cost on the borrowing, or the lack of money if you don't borrow, and the principal are going to be faster, and one assumes that if you shortened it up to a six-year or a five-year replacement, that you won't go back to a longer period. You know, it's one of these deals where I don't know because I haven't seen the exact detail, and the city manager isn't here tonight, and even if he was, nobody carries that in their head, but it would be nice if the city could publish how much they saved and a brief justification for why they are purchasing the fire engines more rapidly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenz. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them? It's not otherwise on the agenda this evening? All right, we're going to close up the community comment portion of the agenda. I think, actually, Mr. Lorenz, you and I at one time were on the same page on this matter of the fire trucks, because I had been around here long enough, where I'd seen them rebuild fire trucks several times, and wanted to understand better what was the thinking here in terms of acquisition of several fire trucks at the same time. We laid it over on the agenda so I could get a better understanding of what was going on. I think the city manager has addressed this once before, but the reasons why, certainly people have a reason to know why we are doing what we're doing, and I think you've made good notes on this issue, I think, and we can address it two weeks from now. So what we've been doing for practice for the last six, eight months or so is that comments from the community that come to us at a particular meeting, we deal with them two weeks later, because it gives our staff a chance to review everything and come up with the appropriate answer. So we're now going to turn to Lisa Schaefer, who is our assistant city manager, who was here tonight in the absence of our city manager, and she's going to go through the community comment, comments that pertain to matters that were raised a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We had two community comments at the last meeting. The first was from a group of three high school students who commented on the continued change in climate and the need for action. They requested that Edina support the Green New Deals at both the state and federal level. At the meeting, council requested that the EEC review the information, and I talked with Tara Brown, our sustainability manager, and she said that the students have scheduled to present to the EEC at their May 9 meeting.
And would you explain what that acronym stands for?
Oh, I'm sorry, the Energy and Environment Commission. So the students will present there at the May 9 meeting. The Energy and Environment Commission will consider it, and then will ultimately bring back an advisory report for council.
Very good.
The second community comment was from Mr. Frank Lorenz, and he was questioning the use of county information for median income for affordable housing, and that he asserted that because we use Hennepin County's lower number, it appears that our need for assistance is greater. I spoke with our affordable housing manager, and the state, county, and Met Council all use the countywide income to define affordable housing, and that's the definition that they use for funding purposes. There are a couple of practical reasons for that, one being that people oftentimes don't live and work in the same city, and even though the median income might be higher in Edina, that doesn't necessarily mean that individual wages, for example, for retail or healthcare are higher in Edina than they are in Minneapolis. And those were all of the community comments.
Prompt any follow-up or inquiries by council members? All right, good. Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. We'll move on now to the items on the consent agenda that were removed from the consent agenda, and that is items 5M and 5O. We'll take 5M first, and we are going back to Member Anderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to mention, by way of education more than anything else, that this is an ordinance that relates to the wireless siting that's occurring all over the city and all through the metropolitan areas throughout the country. You see the contractors at work. They're involved in rights of way and establishing, laying the groundwork for 5G. I wanted to mention that there is a House Bill 503 that has not reached the floor, but it has been jumped on by Representative Omar, Representative Phillips. I'm not certain of that status at this time. There is no accompanying bill yet in the Senate that supports that. Now, the point of that legislation is because the FCC has established certain regulations and has limited the capacity of municipalities to bill back the contractors. The fees that are generated by the applications, by the work that they're doing, isn't really adequate at this time. This ordinance takes a step towards that better than a policy. Our ordinance is firmer, clearer, and I think will relieve any questions in the public's mind about what the contractors can do, but I would just urge that to contact your elected representatives in support of the House Bill 503C and Senators Klobuchar and Smith, who might be able to take action on establishing a Senate bill as well.
Thank you. Member Anderson, would you care to move M?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second, to adopt ordinance 2019-09, which repeals and replaces Section 24-51 and 24-53 of the Edina City Code concerning small wireless facility aesthetic standards. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And then 5O, a member, Anderson, that was a request for purchase for Arden Park playground replacement equipment.
Yes, thank you. I'm wondering if our acting director is here tonight, just to answer a very quick question. There is a, we asked, I believe it was April 2nd, we discussed the possibility of a barrier-free playground at Arden Park, and I saw the response, I saw the budget, and what we asked at that time is, what's the price differential? So I was just a little fuzzy as to, is it an $18,000 differential from where we are? $135,000 would be the total for a barrier-free park?
No, it would be an additional $135,000.
Okay, that clears up one big question. And then parking at Arden Park was another piece of that, and I do understand that handicap parking is virtually nonexistent in the parking itself, and I can see that the attraction of a facility like that would be significant. People could be coming around, it could create parking problems in the neighborhood, I understand that. I do think it's an opportunity in terms of creating a playground for not fully able children to be able to access that. Now, I noticed that there was a staff recommendation or suggestion that we might consider another site for a barrier-free playground. I'm just wondering if you had anything specific in mind?
Yeah, there's a couple locations that would be more on the north side. One is Woodhill, I'm sorry, Wooddale Park. It currently does have parking. It's a playground that was initially installed in 2000, so it's one that we have been recommending that gets replaced. I think that would be a good location. You know, another location would be Highlands Park, again, because of the availability of parking, and there is space. You know, the only maybe drawback at that location is the heavy use on weekends, especially with some of our athletics, so we want to find a balance there.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's Pamela Park, but that playground was replaced in 2009, but would also be a good location due to parking and access to the neighborhood.
Do you know the condition of the playgrounds at the other two locations, when they might be scheduled for replacement or upgrades?
As I said, we have requested through the CIP process that many of those playgrounds be replaced, so we'll put it through. When we go through our next round of CIPs next year, we will include playground replacements.
Okay, thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Why don't you just stay there for a moment? I think when several of us on the council talked about this issue on April 2nd, thinking about putting in new playground equipment at Arden Park in conjunction with everything else that's being done down there, we thought, what a great opportunity to look at the incremental cost of being barrier-free. Personally, I hadn't thought about the parking issue, and I see it as a genuine issue because I know over at Roslin, where we have a barrier-free park, the park is packed in the summertime, but there's parking right there.
Yeah.
And an abundant amount of parking to accommodate folks, not only from Edina, but other nearby communities that want to get kids with special needs to a barrier-free facility, and I think this is one of the few in the south metro. So to have one on the north end of our community, I think, would be a wonderful thing, and I'm intrigued by the idea of Wooddale Park, I think more so than Highlands because it's more direct. I don't know what Weber looks like in terms of parking ability, but that's another possibility, or in conjunction with what we're thinking about with an expansion of Weber, you know, with the new property that we bought up there. So anyway, a couple other things come to my, come to mind in terms of areas for a barrier-free park, but I'm convinced, too, that as laudable as the goal seemed on April 2nd, to look at that incremental cost differential, and I think the council probably could have lived with it if we would have had the parking available to handle it over there. So I see that as a genuine issue. So, Member Anderson, would you care to move O?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second, to adopt 5O, which is a request for purchase for Arden Park playground equipment replacement. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, now we're going to move on to, thanks, Ms. Phelps, we're going to move on to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. In the first proclamation we have in this portion of the agenda is Kids to Parks Day.
Mr. Mayor, sorry you forgot to approve the consent agenda, the rest of the items.
Oh, all right, excuse me. So we've got the other consent agenda items other than M and O. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of M and O, which we dealt with individually?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, second, to approve the balance of the consent agenda with the exception of M and O. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Sorry for that miss. Now we're on the special recognitions and presentations, and the proclamation we have here, the first one is National Kids to Parks Day. We've got several presentations this evening that we want to make and proclamations that we want to handle here at City Hall. So the first proclamation, Kids to Parks Day, is Saturday, May 18, 2019, and the proclamation reads as follows: "Whereas May 18, 2019, is the ninth Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust and held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypochloresto-lemia. And whereas Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. And now therefore, the city council of the city of Edina does hereby proclaim May 18, 2019, as Kids to Park Day in the city of Edina, and urges residents of Edina to make time to take their children into their, into the neighborhood, state, or national park so they can enjoy themselves more effectively on that particular day." And we've got, we've got some kids, is there a motion to adopt a proclamation, first of all?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion, second, to adopt the Kids to Parks Proclamation Day designated May 18, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we have one of our former colleagues, Josh Sprague, a couple of his kids are here, Johnny and Kelly Sprague, to accept the proclamation and maybe have a few comments about Kids to Parks Day. Do you have a, yeah? Do you want?
Go. Okay. My name is Kelly Sprague. I am 10 years old. I go to Normandale Elementary School. I am in fifth grade. My favorite park is Arden Acres because I live close to it, and there's a lot of space to play, and I love the gardens and the fountain. How well do you know your Edina parks?
Good. It's a great question for everybody. Johnny?
Hi, I'm Johnny Sprague. I am 11 years old. I go to Valdive Middle School. I'm in sixth grade. I like Roslin Park because of the turf fields and the baseball fields.
All right, good. I'm going to walk down. I guess we're going to do a photo, and I'm going to bring this proclamation down.
Where we have to question?
Does anybody have any questions for either Kelly or Johnny about, and what do you plan to do on national parks? What do you plan to do on that particular day?
Uh, I don't know.
Get together with your sister and have some idea of where you want to celebrate the event? Is there, do you have a favorite park, Johnny?
I was just going to ask that question.
Pardon me?
I mean...
You live right across from, what are the parks?
I live right across from Arden.
You live right across from Arden, Acres, but do you have a park that you like to go to where you can do all your athletic things?
Either Roslin or Panama Park.
And Kelly, how about you? Other than, other than Arden, Acres, is there a favorite park for you?
I also like Roslin, and sometimes I like to play soccer at Cornelia.
All right, good. All right, I'm going to walk down here and hand you this proclamation, and we're going to take a photo, I think. You guys want to walk up here with me? Johnny?
Something.
Walk up here. I'm going to put you to the... Let's turn over here for, for the proclamation. You have another, you have another, hold on.
Water.
All right. All right, the next proclamation is for Arbor Day. Day. So we've got the League of Minnesota Cities here tonight. We've got, one of our colleagues, Councilmember Staunton, has been on the league board and has been doing just a terrific job over at the League of Minnesota Cities, and we have Luke Fisher here from the league to talk a little bit about, and you have a colleague with you as well, to talk a little bit about the work that Councilmember Staunton has been doing on behalf of the league, and we really appreciate you coming over here and giving him some well-deserved recognition. So welcome, both of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I don't know what my favorite park in Edina is, though I was quickly Googling, just in case you have any questions. I can't quite answer that yet, and I also am a little disappointed that I have to follow that act. It'll be tough, but I'll do my best. I'm Luke Fisher. I'm deputy director with the League of Minnesota Cities, and I've had a pretty distinct honor of working with Kevin Staunton, one of your council members on the league board, for about the last year and a half that I've been with our organization. Tonight, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, we wanted to come out and say thank you to Kevin, but before we did that, and before we turned that heavy lifting over to Dee Love, a council member from Centerville and one of our board members, I thought I'd share just a little bit about who we are as an organization, so everyone can have some sense of the work that Kevin has done and his role on the league board. So the League of Minnesota Cities represents 833 cities in the state. Our smallest member is the city of Berry, out in western Minnesota, with a population of about 13 people, and our largest city is the city of Minneapolis with about 422,000. Each year, our insurance trust handles about 8,000 claims on behalf of our members. We've got a research staff that responds to 4,000 inquiries from cities across the state, big and small, with varying levels of complexity. Every year, we see about 2,500 of our members at a training conference or event. Councilmember Anderson was at our newly-elected training this year. It was great to have you there. And we're preparing right now for our annual conference in Duluth, June 26 through the 28th. It'll be a great opportunity for all of you to come and connect and network with some of your colleagues from across the state. We have an HR staff that responds to 2,000 inquiries. Lisa Schaefer used to be part of the leadership of that team, and we certainly miss her at the league, but we're happy she's here working with you. And we've got a guy, just one guy at the league, that reviews about 1,000 contracts every year on behalf of our members, and it's a valuable service where we think we can help add value and help cities partner better with their city attorneys to ask the right questions and to get the right input that they need from their own legal staff. As an organization, we do a lot of things, and doing a lot of things, and doing a lot of things well, and doing a lot of things relevantly to our members wouldn't be possible without a board of directors that really provide clear leadership and guidance and are really tapped in to cities' needs from across the state. Kevin Staunton is one of those people who has had his hand on the rudder and helped steer our organization for the last three years. To recognize Kevin, though, I brought Dee Love. He is the chairman of our insurance trust board, and he's a council member in Centerville, and he's going to say just a little bit more about Kevin, but Kevin, I wanted to say thank you for all that you've done for us.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Well, I wish my hair was as cool as Johnny's. You know, I would shave it if I, if it was like that. Kid looked cool. Good evening. My name is Dee Love, and I'm a city council member from the city of Centerville. I'm also a sitting board member with Kevin on the executive board and chair of the trust board, as Luke just said, so I took half of what I had written down here. Normally, when I'm asked to come out to these, though, they ask me because I make the presenters look better or, you know, provide more personality, so I wasn't quite sure why Luke asked me. Younger than me and better looking, so I'm not quite sure, but in all honesty, when I heard the opportunity to come out and recognize Kevin, I just couldn't pass it up. You know, Kevin is a fellow native of Illinois, and he also, you know, he introduced himself to me about a year ago, and he shared that impressive resume of attorney by day and council member by night. I thought, wow, this guy's really cool. But wait a second, there's two people you want to be around, people you're smarter than, or people you don't want to be around at all? No, that's not how that goes. Just kidding. You know, Kevin never came across like that, though. Kevin's not overbearing in any way. He will share his opinion with you, but not, but doing it in just a serious, natural way that doesn't make you feel like your opinion doesn't count. So I really appreciated about that about Kevin when I first got to know him and made himself someone that you did want to be around and kind of learn from and grow from. So pretty, pretty awesome guy there. Kevin is well-respected in our organization as well. He is, he has a thoughtful approach to all matters that come before us as a board, and he has helped guide the race equity efforts that we've had at the league over the last few years. In fact, with Kevin's guidance, we are one of the top leagues around the country. We're, in fact, we're doing much better than many of our league peers, and it wouldn't be that way without Kevin's guidance and, and his thoughtfulness in reference to that. I also thought it was important to note that Kevin once said, and I got to read this because I, when I, when I read it at first, I thought, wow, I don't know if I can remember to say that. Civic engagement is sort of a holy grail in the work we do on behalf of the public. That is important that we meet people where they are, listen with intention, do something productive, and purposeful with the input. Kevin has shown leadership at the league as we have revamped member engagement work over the past few years, and these engagement efforts have, I'm sorry, has aimed at understanding precisely what our members need, and they have guided changes to the services we offer. And we cannot express how much we appreciate that about Kevin. Now, most of you know that Kevin's this really thoughtful guy. Now, most of you know that Kevin's this really thoughtful guy and kind of smart, makes wise judgments. Well, recently, maybe you don't know this, but he made the decision to go on a 950-mile trip with some of the League's staff up north in Minnesota. And he did this during the polar vortex. So that really made me question his judgment there a little bit. You know, you get to year three and then you make that decision. I'm not quite sure about that, Kevin. But that's going out on a high note, I guess I'd say. But with that said, you should all be very proud of Kevin and the work that he's done with the League. He has done a fabulous job for us. He has represented your city well. And we really, really appreciate everything that you've done for us. So thank you for having us out this evening.
Kevin?
Thank you.
Let's bring Kevin down.
I was just gonna say, we don't get a photo op?
Thank you, Councilmember Love. Kevin, let's go down. Now, we're gonna talk a little bit about trees. We've got Luther Overhold here, our arborist, city arborist, to talk a little bit about what's happening in our city from a tree standpoint. But first, we're gonna read a proclamation that involves the celebration of Arbor Day, which is coming up at the end of this month on April 26, 2019. And that proclamation for Arbor Day reads as follows. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas forest soils prevent flooding and reduce stormwater by capturing and storing rainwater and snowmelt, which is then slowly released to our lakes, streams, and groundwater. And whereas trees and forests improve our physical health by cleaning the air, reducing exposure to the sun's UV rays, and decreasing temperatures during the summertime. And whereas one tree provides $62,000 worth of pollution control over a period of 50 years. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas forests create high-quality drinking water by acting as a natural filter. And whereas Edina is proud of the beautiful shade trees which grace our homes and public places. And now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Edina, Minnesota, does hereby proclaim April 26, 2019, as Arbor Day in the city of Edina and call upon the spirited and foresighted citizens of Edina to continue to plant trees now for our pleasure and for the pleasure of future generations. Is there a motion to adopt that proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carrie? Luther, welcome.
Thank you. So, yeah, I would just like to invite everyone here to our Arbor Day celebration this year. Like you said, it's Friday, April 26th. This year, it's at Countryside Park at 10:00 a.m. And there, we will be planting nine new trees to replace... as preemptive replacement trees for the nine existing ash trees that are at the park.
Why don't you talk a little bit about Emerald Ash Borer too and some of the strategies we're employing with respect to our ash trees?
Yeah, so it was actually about a year ago now that I found Emerald Ash Borer here in Edina. So since then, I've been increasing the amount of injections I've been doing throughout the city on city trees. That's the only way to protect the tree from dying. Otherwise, in other parks, I've been going through and doing preemptive replacements. I've been taking new trees, planted them adjacent to existing mature ash trees. That way, they benefit from the shade from the ash trees for the next couple of years until the ash trees will eventually end up dying. And that way, the new replacement trees have a greater chance at, you know, surviving and growing to be big, just like the ash trees that they're replacing.
And I'm sure some folks in the room and in our community that may be watching have been down past Arden Park and have seen what's happened down there and all of the remeander work that's gone on and the deepening of the passage, of the creek bed. You can see good things happening down there. And why don't you talk a little bit about our tree replacement strategy down there? Because there's a lot of trees that are gone and you might talk a little bit about the ash that are gone down there and some of the other woodstock that's gone and what we're doing to replace those.
So been a little... I was actually attempting to plant trees last week, but we got snow. So kind of got screwed up a little bit by that. But taken in a variety of different-sized trees to replace in there for all the trees that were taken out. I think one of the biggest differences is, though, that all the buckthorn was removed in the park. So before, when you'd drive by, you wouldn't even be able to see the creek from the road. It was just a wall of trees and that was... the majority of that was buckthorn. And so once that got out of there, that really opened up the park. But we'll be replacing some, you know, putting in some nice, big, large diameter trees. I have some, you know, trees that are up to about 10, 12 inches in diameter that are getting spaded in around the playground and the warming house and, you know, other prominent areas in the park. Otherwise, we'll be planting hundreds of potted trees and then thousands of bare woodstock trees throughout the park for all of the replacements just to get it to grow back to, you know, a nice, natural wooded area.
All right. If I recall correctly, I think our replacement ratio was like four to one.
Yeah.
Every one you removed, you're replacing with four.
Yep.
All right, good. I'm gonna walk down and hand you... Member Brindle?
I have a question. Hi, Luther. So along Bramar Boulevard, there's an area that is holding a lot of water.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of dead tree in there and has been for a couple of years. But I'm noticing that now there's some, obviously, some tree removal, tree cutting
Yes.
going on there. So what is that project?
So that was just the trees, yeah, they were getting to the point where they were falling apart and becoming hazardous. And so we went in and cut down the hazardous trees so that they... you know, some of them were getting close to falling into the street. So those are kind of the first ones we went after. But then after that, we went in and removed other ones that were, you know, just if, you know, people or kids are in there playing posed a threat for, you know, just public safety.
Good.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna walk down. I think we're gonna... I think you have a photo here, Luther. We've got one more proclamation this evening. And the proclamation deals with Building Safety Month. And our chief building official, Dave Fisher, is here. Maybe Dave wants to come up while I read the proclamation and is gonna talk a little bit about building safety in our community. The proclamation involving Building Safety Month is for May 2019. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the city of Edina is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings in our city of Edina. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a U.S.-based organization that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to keep America great. And whereas no codes, no confidence, the theme for Building Safety Month 2019, encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2019 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Edina hereby proclaims the month of May 2019 as Building Safety Month. And the City of Edina accordingly encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion, second, to adopt the proclamation designating May 2019 as Building Safety Month. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the proclamation, as read, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carrie? And Mr. Fisher, welcome.
Thank you. I really appreciate all your support. Our department does as well. We probably could not do that without your support. Along with all our permit software and the electronic plan review, it helps us be more efficient and I think it helps us do a great job.
Good. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Fisher? Otherwise, I'll walk down and we'll get a photo and move on to the next part of the meeting.
Just thank you for the... for all the work. And, I mean, there's a lot of background work in continuing to learn and keep yourself aware and educated on building practices, green building practices. But also just helping us to keep our codes at the front of how things are built here. So thank you.
You're welcome.
That concludes the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. Now, we're gonna move on to reports and recommendations. And the first matter we have in front of us in that portion of the agenda is potential redevelopment agreement with France Equities for the 727250 France Avenue project. And Bill Nuenendorf, our Economic Development Manager, has this matter. Mr. Nuenendorf, welcome.
Yes, good evening. This item on the agenda this evening is the final redevelopment agreement between the city and France Equities LLC. This is related to the redevelopment of the two properties at 727250 France Avenue. This site and this project have been debated at great length over several years. The item that we have tonight is the last step in that conversation to finalize the terms of a tax increment financing agreement with the developer. This item has been discussed at length on a couple of different occasions. I've run through the same presentation. I have that presentation here tonight, but we've seen it three or four times. I thought I would just do a brief introduction and then answer any questions if you'd have them. So the proposal that's in the packet is based on the terms that were approved by both the City Council and the HRA back in February. We've worked for the last couple of months to develop those terms into a full legal contract. The contract has been prepared by the special counsel of the HRA, Dorsey and Whitney, with, of course, advice and input from our financial advisor at Ellers Associates. All of our team is here in the audience this evening if there are any questions. We've worked at length, asking questions and getting answers from the developer and their representatives. Mr. Blake Bonjean is a property owner and developer. His representative, Michael Margulies, is also in the audience, available for any questions. So the item that's in the packet is the same that was in the HRA packet last week. There have been no changes. There's a number of different criteria that identify the obligations and responsibilities of the developer and then future obligations of the city as far as reimbursing them for eligible expenses, but only upon successful completion of the project. So as I said, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'll leave it at that and make our whole team available.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Nuenendorf. Member Brindle?
I just have one question, and that is, I see Mr. Anderson in the audience tonight. Do we know who is going to build these buildings?
I don't think that has been decided at this time. We...
I thought maybe that was why he was here.
Possibly. I don't know that for certain.
All right, great. Thank you.
Other questions? That was this on Thursday morning as an HRA.
I don't really have any questions, Your Honor, but thank you. I... thanks for your presentation on numerous occasions. Thank you. And I... on the 11th, I made a fair number of points. And I'd like to just to review them because we're in a different meeting at a different time, calling for a different vote. So what we have is, tonight, is the final approval of the redevelopment agreement, which contains a $12 million TIF note. However, as noted before, the TIF budget is really 28.4 million. And that includes $10.7 million in interest that will... we pay that interest as a city based on the opportunity created for the developer under Section 8.2 and 8.3 of the redevelopment agreement. The, you know, the concern that I have, a couple of them in here, and I've mentioned it before, but I want to say it again. We have about $5 million that is designated within this budget, 4.9, I believe, of the 12, which is designated as a... for a continuation of affordability beyond the 15 years required in our policy. And that may be a very good idea when the time comes. I don't believe that the time is here to make that commitment. I do understand that the TIF note and the agreement has been structured in that way. And I do fully understand that it is designed to bridge the gap. The $5 million, however, I view as an amount within 28.4, which if it were not included, if we didn't make that decision at this time about committing that $5 million to a 10-year period of affordability, that that $5 million in that TIF district, the housing district that will be created, could be used for other affordable housing options that we might have available to us under pooling. So I, like Bud Grant, I don't like to make decisions before the time comes to make them. And that's really kind of part of my thinking here. The calculation infers that we can't figure out over the next 15 years how to better meet the needs of our affordable housing advocates and to create more permanent farms of affordable housing in our community. This council, I believe, has a united mindset to create affordable housing. And we recognize the need for it. You know, the answer has always been it's the gap and the difference in market rates, what market rates can provide and what affordable housing can provide. So what we know is that the developer will collateralize the TIF note and borrow against that, which he has the right to do under the redevelopment agreement. And that essentially creates more equity. At the same time, we also note that there's 28,000, over 28,000 square feet of commercial space on that first level, in the two buildings. The architect, Mr. DeBalis, was part of a group that built the property. The, the architect, Mr. DeBalis, was part of a group that built the, the property on 70th and France, which recently sold, 6,700 feet there, which sold for over $8 million, $8,250,000. By using those calculations, within three years or four years, when that building is built, the commercial space is created and the, and leased up, that creates an equity figure there of about $34.5 million, or potentially more at that time. Whether that's cash in hand at that time, or whether just considered equity in the project, it seems to me that we could find a device to offset the city's interest expense to be able to use those funds in a better way. And I, I, I just want to end that by recognizing the mayor's comments the other day about, when we had this same conversation. He commented on the expense of building affordable housing, that the market, the marketplace, the private marketplace struggles to respond to that need, which is true. I find this an opportunity to help the private marketplace respond a little bit better to that need by asking them to offset our interest expense. The $5 million alone carries my quick calculation, over $3 million in interest. So our deferred decision on that really results in another $3 million. So I want to end these comments, which you have heard in the past, and thank you for your patience in hearing them again. Just in saying that, I, I don't personally, I don't personally believe in paying interest on money that I haven't borrowed, and, and that's really what we're doing here, and so, again, I thank you for your patience.
Member Staunton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a slightly different take on, on this issue. Couple of things. One, I think it's important to remember that the, that the gap that our financial advisors have identified and confirmed is somewhere in the neighborhood of $23 or $24 million. And so this clearly satisfies the but-for test. If we don't provide tax increment financing here, this project will not move forward. And if we don't provide, and if the project doesn't move forward, then there will be no affordable housing, either, even for the initial 15 years that's required, or for the 25 years that we're extending to. The other thing that I think is important to keep in mind is that the $5 million or $4.9 million that's in the materials is really a piece of a compilation of eligible expenses that can be reimbursed. There are a number of items in this that are extraordinary. The Southdale District Plan identified a new vision for the greater Southdale area. A big part of that new vision was breaking the superblocks that we have that are a quarter mile long into smaller blocks of 200 feet or so. There's no obligation by a developer to do so, and in this case, we're getting that in part because we're having, in the neighborhood of 45% of the, of the land area on the site dedicated to public use, including the stand of trees to the west of the townhomes, which will be preserved in perpetuity as a screen between the residential neighbors to the west and the townhomes. And so when you add up, and at a previous meeting, I went through the math and, and added up all of the items that go into this, you get far in excess of that $12 million in terms of what the city is getting for this. And in my view, there are really three things we ought to be looking at as we think about tax increment financing. One is, does it meet the but-for test? I think clearly here it does. Second is, what's the risk for the city? And there's two pieces to that. One is, are we fronting the money, or is someone else taking the risk? And in this case, it's a pay-as-you-go, so the developer has to come up with the money. If they have to borrow it, it's not us who has to repay it if it doesn't come forward. It's their, it's them who have to repay it, so it's their risk. And the bigger picture indirect risk is that even with this, we are below 4% of our tax capacity that's tied up in tax increment finance districts. So there isn't, in my view, no risk when you compare us to our neighbors who have at least doubled that in tax increment finance districts. So I think this is a smart investment. The third piece of this puzzle is what's in it for us? And as I identified at previous meetings, and when you look at, at all of the things we're getting for this that are part of what we are aiming for, what our resident-led Southdale Area District Plan identified, we're, we're getting a whole bunch of stuff here that we're looking to get. We're hiding parking. We're getting a transition from the France Avenue corridor to the neighborhood to the west. We're getting this dedication of public realm, and we're getting a great project. So while I would like to wait for the perfect solution on, on affordable housing, I think this is a solution that we should be seizing here, and it comes in a package that's way broader than just the affordable housing, and I will vote in favor.
Member Brindle.
Thank you. You know, there's a lot you don't know. What we do know is the value of the property today. We know it's blighted property today. I don't argue the but-for test. I think it passes the but-for test. But what we do have is the ability to watch this property transform. Now, it's a 25, is it a 20-year TIF district, 26?
It's a 20-year district.
20-year district. So let's say that, that while the affordability is committed to a 25-year term of affordability for the affordable units of townhomes and apartments, it's possible that the tax increment, which is captured in order for the city to have the money to reimburse the builder for the reimbursable costs, it's possible. And we really, I mean, none of us knows, but we all hope, and we feel, we wouldn't be voting for this and feeling confident in this project if we didn't think that this project is going to increase the property value enough to get the increment to make the project make sense. We would not be discussing it tonight if it didn't make sense, but it may make sense even quicker than the 20 years. And I hear, member Anderson, in the concern about interest. You never want to pay more interest than you have to, because you don't get anything for interest. You have to pay interest because it's just how money works. But it's possible that this district isn't going to last 20 years. It won't need to last 20 years. It may generate enough of an increment to pay back the reimbursable costs in less than 20 years, which in itself then reduces the interest cost. So while I can't say that that's what's going to happen, I think there's a distinct possibility that it could, because of what a transformation this will be. So I am in favor of this. I will vote in favor of it, and I will really be hoping that we don't have a 20-year district here, that we get our work done, we meet our objectives, and we meet them sooner than 20 years.
Thank you, Member Brindle, and thank you, colleagues, for your comments. I too will be supporting this. We've worked on this for months as a council, as an HRA. We've got a, this was originally set up as a special housing district, and the purpose of that was to look at, what the applicant proposed was 20% affordable units in this building. I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 62 units, if memory serves me correctly, and they'll be there for 25 years. And it's a, it's, as member Anderson points out, it's not inexpensive, and I think our Housing Director Stephanie Hawkinson would say it's not inexpensive, but as we go about the process of trying to figure out how to create housing affordability in our community, this is at least one project where we thought we had a chance to put as much as 20% of the project of, of a wonderful building into affordability. And as member Staunton points out, we had $28 million in eligible TIF expenses here that could have qualified, but we looked, we capped it off at 12. That's the extent of the help we're going to get. Mr. Bonjean is going to come up with the rest of it through probably increase in equity partners or out of his own pocket. We also can't forget about the fact that, as I think member Anderson talked about, there was a recent land sale, I think he's been referring to, that where the, where the, where the cost of the land was significant. And I don't think you can necessarily extrapolate from that, that you're going to have that same sort of commercial property value at this particular site, because of what happened in a, in a, in a sale that may or may not be comparable. Also, I think, Mr. Nundorf, you might want to talk about the clawback provision elements of this, that, that we're making sure that there is not too much profitability here, that if, if they get over a certain threshold, we're clawing that excess profit back.
Yes, that's correct. In every TIF agreement, we always include look-back provisions on a couple of occasions over the term of the district. So before we actually issue a TIF note, we review the actual costs. Right now, we're basing on, we're, we're using budgets and estimates, so before we actually confirm the $12 million, we'll be reviewing the developer's numbers to make sure that the gap is still $12 million. It could be less than that, but it won't be more than 12. And that the second look-back that we always include is looking in the future, if there, if there is that home run, grand slam sale, and there's a tremendous profit to the, to the developer, that's great for them, but in that instance, they didn't need a $12 million, $12 million subsidy, so we have language in the contract that would allow us to scale back the level of assistance that's actually provided. The goal here is to have the developer build the project and get a market rate return. If they get more than that, then we get some rebate, so to speak, on the, on the TIF assistance. So we always, as a matter of course, include that in every legal contract, just to make sure that we see the project forward, but not overly subsidize any project.
All right. Good. I don't know if this whole conversation has prompted either of our consultants to want to comment on anything. I doubt it, but it's, it's more policy-driven than anything else, so we had this discussion at the HRA, and member Anderson was very articulate in expressing his thoughts about, though he favors affordable housing, he thinks there's, you know, other ways that this could be more effectively done. I think in all the work that we do on affordable housing, you'll, you'll see some real opportunities, and you'll see some projects that involve a little bit more of a commitment on the city's part, and this happens to be one of them. But it's also a big commitment on the part of the developer to make 20% of this affordable, and I think that's a really significant inroad in what we want to see in terms of housing that's affordable, creating housing that's affordable in our community, that, that, that really meets market standards. And so that people that are living in there, are going to be living like everybody else that's in there at a market rate, in really high-quality apartments, and, and having the kind of life they should have. So I'm going to support this as well. So we have this matter in front of us. It's a redevelopment agreement with France Avenue Equities. This is the last piece of the puzzle that we've previously approved, including the, the TIF assistance. So is there a motion to approve the redevelopment agreement with France Equities for 727250 France Avenue?
So moved.
And also to authorize staff to implement the terms of the agreement?
So moved.
Got a motion of that effect? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. This is an action by voice vote, simple majority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Carried. All right. Thank you for your comments, colleagues. Thank you, everybody. And next, we're going to talk about trees some more, and we got Tom Swinson coming up here to talk about some modifications he thinks we need to make in the tree ordinance that we passed a few years ago, and I think these proposed changes look real good. Let's, let's talk about it. Luther Overholt is back up here with us as well.
So we're here today to talk about Emerald Ash Bore and some changes to the ordinance we'd like to make. Just a couple of really quick slides to give you some background information. Why the change? Emerald Ash Bore, as we discussed earlier, has been detected in Edina. Emerald Ash Bore kills ash trees unless they are chemically treated or removed. The city forester needs changes to the ordinance to perform his duties. And we have a picture of a healthy ash tree and an infected ash tree. So what is the change we'd like to implement? The current Edina City Code only references Dutch elm and oak wilt diseases. Adding Emerald Ash Bore by a more broad definition of tree and plant pests will help Luther's activities, including ash to the list of trees that are not defined as protected during redevelopment will also help the safe removal of some ash trees during redevelopment processes. And there's a couple of pictures of the ash borer bug and what the grub looks like in the tree. And that was my short couple of bullet points, just to explain why, why we feel this is important to adopt this ordinance change.
All right. Good. And we've got the proposed ordinance changes in front of us in red line fashion, and I like the work that you've done, as I mentioned earlier. Do any of the council members have questions for Mr. Swinson, or for Mr. Overholt? Member Brindle.
Thank you. So as part of this ordinance, the position of tree inspector is hereby created within the city pursuant to the statute. Is that a new position, or is that an additional role?
So that is not changed. We're just changing the language within the ordinance to allow Luther to react to the ash bore that's in Edina.
Okay. Great. So that is not new?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
I think it's only the red line changes that are new.
Yeah. Yeah. I guess so.
Any other questions on this matter? All that makes sense. Practical changes that we need to be making based on what's happening in nature.
Yep.
All right. Mr. Overholt, any supplemental comment?
No, so I think, you know, this is just, you know, founded a year ago. Finally, you know, it's getting to the point where, you know, I'm going to need to take action with, you know, being able to tag these trees for removal, just like oak wilt and Dutch elm. All the other cities around us are doing similar things with their ordinance. And then, yeah, the, the reason for, you know, leaving it broad is so that, you know, in the future, we won't have to come back here and change the ordinance again. There's already another pest, Asian Longhorn Beetle, that's in the Chicago area, that goes after maple trees and lindens, and so that's kind of the next thing that I'm already thinking about in the future, as, you know, I went through and had to, you know, kind of change stuff around in here to make it work for, for Emerald Ash Bore as well.
Good.
I have another question.
Member Brindle.
Thank you. So Luther, your position, your first responsibility is all the city property?
Correct.
The trees in all the parks.
Yep.
Do you provide any assistance to residents who are curious about the trees on their property?
Yep. So I come out, I do inspections on elms, oaks, and now ash as well. So if anyone has, you know, any concerns about the trees, just because those are the only ones that have diseases that can be spread from one, one tree to the, to another. And so I do come out and look at all those, you know, for anyone that has, you know, questions on it, and offer, you know, recommendations on what, you know, I think is best to do. You know, because with ash trees, they get to a certain point where the, the treatments are no longer feasible, and removal is the only option. Otherwise, you know, if, you know, they value the tree enough, you know, I recommend getting it injected so that, you know, the tree will stay alive and you can continue to benefit from it in the future.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Good. Member Anderson, anything on this? All right. So I entertain a motion to amend or adopt ordinance 2019-08, which amends chapters 10 and 30 of the Edina City Code concerning trees. Also entertain a motion to waive the second reading so we can get this fully implemented immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second to adopt the ordinance changes in 2019-08 as recommended by staff. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. And then a resolution 2019-31, accepting, thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 2019-31, which we have periodically, which requires us as a council to accept donations proposed to be given to the city, and we have to have a supermajority vote on these matters, two-thirds majority. So resolution 2019-31, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as shown?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second to adopt resolution 2019-31, which accepts certain donations on behalf of the City of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of, of accepting those donations embodied in resolution 2019-31, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. And donations, this reporting period, there's a singular donation, and it is to the Police Department, and it is from AAA Minneapolis in the amount of $2,000 to help- Department, and it is from AAA Minneapolis in the amount of $2,000 to help support and sponsor the Safe Driving Initiative rodeo at the Edina High School. So thank you to AAA. And then we are on to correspondence and petitions. Any correspondence that's come in? System Manager Schaefer, other than what we've had on the dais this evening? Okay. And then aviation noise update, Member Brindle?
Just a couple things. The next Noise Oversight Committee meeting will be Wednesday, May 15th, at 1:30 at the Metropolitan Airport Commission Office on 28th Avenue, south of Crosstown Highway 62, right just on the west side of the airport. And then, just today, we finalized plans to hold a listening session in Edina. Edina, City of Edina, will host a listening session to talk about noise. And so residents or business owners, anyone who wants to come and talk about their concerns about aircraft noise, where they work, or where they live, or where they study. It'll be Wednesday, July 24th, at 7:00 PM at the Southwest Metro Public Safety Training Facility, which is in the Braemar complex in the southwest quadrant of Edina. So thanks to all the folks involved for helping put that together. And also thanks to Fire Chief Tom Schmitz. We did look at the training room at the fire station for this, for this listening session as well. And, and since we could have, past listening, listening sessions have had upwards to about 100 people, we thought the training room was maybe going to be just a little tight. And we have a little more space at the, the Public Safety Training Facility. And the parking's a little easier there as well. So anyway, because if there's a game at Countryside, all the parking's going to be filled up. So anyway, so we look forward to that, and, and City of Edina is happy to host.
Good, thank you. Anything further on that topic? System Manager Schaefer? All right. Council comments, Member Staunton?
Couple of things. First of all, I just want to thank Luke Fisher and Dee Love for coming out and sharing the recognition. It's great to be recognized for that service. It has been a labor of love for me to be on the League Board. For those who don't know, I also have had years of experience with the League in my capacity as a city attorney, where they've been enormously helpful to my practice and other city attorneys around the state. And so it's a pleasure for me to have the chance to give back to that organization. Luke, of course, led the, the Polar Vortex trip that I had the privilege of joining in, in January. And Dee mentioned only in passing that he, he does double duty in addition to his work as a city council member in Centerville. He is the Chair of the League Trust Board and a member of the League Board. So he's a dedicated public servant as well, and I appreciate the two of them taking the time to come out and, and recognize my service. It is also something that the League is doing a lot of these days, the outreach. Certainly, the trip up north was an example of that. But Luke, as the new Deputy Director, has done a terrific job of engaging, going out and meeting people where they live and experiencing people in the communities they serve. And I think it's really taking the League's work to the next level. So I appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to just call out for folks is, there was an item on our work session agenda this evening that we didn't get a chance to talk about directly, but I want people to be aware of it, and it is the first quarter update on our 2018-19 budget work plan. And if you are interested in what is really happening at the city, the best way to do that is follow our priorities through the budget. And this is a great document that we put together once every quarter to give the council and give the community a sense of where we're going and what we've accomplished, what's in progress, what's completed, what is on hold. And I think you can learn a lot from looking at this document. So I would commend anyone who's interested in, in seeing not just a characterization of what's going on at the city, but the actual nuts and bolts of what we're doing. Take a look at this document. It's a really helpful way to follow what's happening in your community. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. It was really terrific, I thought, to have the League here to celebrate your service. And we all know what a terrific job and what a great addition you are to the League Board. And all those other League Board members that, that I know that tell me that so much, you know, over and over again, how much they appreciate serving with you on the League Board, and how much wisdom you bring to that organization. Contrary to Councilmember Love's comments about, wondering about your judgment going to Northern Minnesota and the Polar Vortex.
Well, it was a fair question to raise.
Well, you should tell people about the council member from Badette who came into the meeting at 28 below.
Her line was, her line was, after we all were complaining about how cold it was, she finally acknowledged that, yeah, it might be a zip-your-coat-up kind of day.
All right. Member Brindle?
Council comments?
Council comments?
All right. I will lead off with one council comment that probably is going to be echoed by the rest of everyone up here. And that is, congratulations and thank you to the folks who volunteer in Edina. Last night, we had a wonderful event. And it, it is the annual volunteer recognition reception. It was held at Braemar Golf Course and catered by Lancer Catering, the, the folks who run the Red River Kitchen. And, and just, just truly, a hearty thank you to, and heartfelt thank you to all the volunteers who put in their time as commission members, as club members of Edina Feds or Rotary Clubs, Lions Clubs, the folks, you know, not, not everyone was there. You, you have, any, any organization has the opportunity to, to recognize someone. And, and there are just a myriad of volunteer-led programs in our city, not the least of which is the Fourth of July Parade. That's a big one. And so thank you, congratulations to those who were honored last night. And, and it is truly one of the, one of the reasons why Edina is such a special place.
Thank you. Member Anderson?
Thank you. You know, I too wanted to comment on the recognition reception last night. I thought it was particularly well-attended, and I thought additionally that there was a genuine sense of appreciation, especially from the award recipients. They deserve it. And it was, it was duly noted. Serendipitously, I was seated at a table with a former coworker who was, who received an award there last night. And by additional circumstance, I'd been asked to speak to a group that he is a member of earlier this morning, or she was a member, both of them, actually, it's a married couple. So I did have the opportunity to, to mention to him in the group that it's typical that the spouse of a award-receiving recipient buys a round. And I'm hoping they took the opportunity to do so in the course of the day-to-day. But it was, Stella Rezak was the recipient, and she does a great job for the Women's Federation. But he, I think, accepted that responsibility.
Very good, thank you. Quick rundown of the calendar here. On the 4th of April, I attended the Bold New Idea Event. It was over at Abby Powers' home, Abby and Doug over on, on Sunny Slope. And that was an Edina Community Foundation event, and they had four groups pitching ideas. One of them was a group of young girls that were pitching the benefits of sports activities and building leadership skills. And they walked away the winner on a, on a tiebreaker vote, and they had to go to the online voting to determine the winner. And of course, I think, give younger people credit for knowing how to get online, to vote online. And so they, they walked away with a fairly nice amount of money to work on their, their big idea. We had the town hall meeting on the 6th. We had a good attendance out of Braemar. I think it must have been around 50 people there. System Manager Schaefer was there. I don't know if you did a head count or not, but we had quite good attendance, I think.
I was not actually there, but I believe that there was around 30 to 40 people who attended.
All right, well, good. Well, thanks to those folks that did attend. And then on the 9th, I attended a meeting of the, they've got a group forming over at the Chamber that is going to try to promote Edina as a place of well-being in a destination medical center. So somewhat akin to what they're doing down in Rochester. Stay tuned for more information on that. They've got quite a group put together to tout the benefits of Edina as a medical destination location and as a center of well-being. Monday morning, I started out yesterday with a trek downtown to the Federal Reserve Building and had breakfast with Eileen Churimov, who used to be the Chair of the Met Council, who's now a Senior VP at the Fed. I'm mentioning this because I'd like all my council members to think about this question that she posed for me, and that is, how can the Federal Reserve improve the quality of people's lives, everyday lives? And so we talked about, quite a bit about affordable housing. They're, they're very interested in affordable housing issues. And of course, across that whole district, that Federal Reserve District from here to Montana, that issue is prevalent about how you create housing affordability. But to the extent you can think of other ways that the Federal Reserve could improve the quality of people's lives, let me know, and I'll pass that information on to, to Eileen. This coming Saturday, we have Walk with the Mayor. We're meeting at the Edina Theater at 9:00 on Saturday morning, the 20th. And we're going to, I think Bill Nundorf will be with us. We're going to walk around the 50th and France neighborhood to see the progress on the construction. A member, Staunton, and I were down there a month or so ago and went up in the parking ramp, and you get a good view of the new project down there. And you can really see the, the changes that are taking place at 50th and France. And then I've got a TAB meeting tomorrow. And then, of course, this is Easter weekend, so for everybody that's involved in Easter weekend, I hope you have a wonderful weekend. Member Brindle and Member Anderson both mentioned the community volunteer recognition reception last night. So the organizations recognizing their own special volunteers, where the, the Chamber, Edina Community Foundation, the Edina Garden Council, the Federation of Women's Club, the Edina Public Schools, recognizing volunteers, Edina Soccer Association, Friends of the Edina Library, the Morningside Women's Club, the Rotary Club of Edina, and then the Edina Morningside Rotary Club, which is a club that Member Staunton, Member Brindle, and I belong to. There's also some city commendations that are made, and I wanted to just talk a little bit about those people before we adjourn this evening. The mayor's individual service commendation this year went to the two folks that led our Race and Equity Task Force, Jessica Kingston and James Pierce, who did a wonderful job leading that group of 30 people, and received recognition for that exceptional work that they did. The mayor's outstanding senior commendation went to Hope Milton for all the work she's been doing on affordable housing. And then the mayor's service organization commendation went to Edina Give and Go, which is seeing a tremendous uptick in, in demand from folks throughout our community for assistance on things like piano lessons and, and band instruments and summer sports activities. Their demand is up 100% over last year. Mayor's service to youth commendation went to Glenn Gray, who's been active in the Edina Soccer Association. And then our, our own Bob Wilson, our city assessor, we had to pick on him a little bit. I was not going to identify him to keep him protected from the audience, but nonetheless, he was good-humored about it. And then we reminded people that tomorrow night is their last night to come in and protest their estimated market value. Bob was real pleased about that. But Bob got the mayor's community involvement commendation. So congratulations to all those city-related award recipients that received mayor's commendations, and all those other volunteers as well, as Member Anderson and Member Brindle have said. It was a terrific night out at Braemar. There was a lot of buzz in the air, and people really had a wonderful time with each other. So that's it for me. System Manager Schaefer, you want to talk a little bit more about something we worked on upstairs or talked a little bit, a little bit about upstairs, and that was this council connection notion. So do you want to revisit that topic?
Yes, thank you, mayor members of the council. I just have two comments for tonight. One, following up on the council connection virtual town hall. So I think we did get through most of that conversation in the work session. We do have a couple of other items in addition to that from the retreat to follow up on, so we will schedule something for a future work session to wrap up those topics.
Very good.
And then as far as board and commission, we have our student interviews. The application deadline is May 15th. And so looking for feedback on which council members would like to participate, and if there are any strong feelings or preferences for whether we have two council members and a commission member or some combination, that feedback you can give to me either tonight or sometime between now and the next meeting.
Okay, good. Let's hold off so we can talk to Member Fisher, too. Member Brindle's been really diligent about doing those interviews. I don't know how she feels about continuing, but let's have that.
Sure, yep.
Yeah, all right, very good. There's one, there's one out of two.
All right.
And we'll talk to Member Fisher, and we can think about it as well in the gap period. Anything else?
That is all.
Okay. Anything else from council members? All right, we'll stand adjourned.